The policy we've made clear to David Keelson that he's not to sign off or grant.
We also wanted to go to everybody involved.
Right.
Okay, so there are two things that could occur here then. Somebody could just simply not have a personnel change form and still be within Mass 168, Mass General Law.
It's 268.
268, excuse me. And then another pathway that could result in errors or confusion is if somebody comes through under this against 268, meaning that they have been contracted.
They can't do both.
Right, exactly. So, from my perspective, it would be great to have that additional policy clarified and right into it and set up too.
But we've done this, and I mean, we should do it, but we've had Ed come in as recently as a year or two ago at all boards meeting and go through the whole process of what they're supposed to do. And it's a, it got, the ones we had problems with this time were informal, you know, people just moving and shifting and not getting their positions cleared through PCFs and everything else, so. The point of this is, the memo goes out to everybody, should go out to all department heads again, and especially those who would make paychecks.
A second avenue to that was that we need to make it clear that vacancy needs to be post-jot booked. And I know certain jobs have to continue. We can make a recommendation for emergency fill and carry that forward to the same PCF facility department position as well. We recommended that happen in the case where a position was filled without posting it. We stopped it going that way, it will be posted, and there's temporary person put into that position until they're posted. To establish in other people as well as anybody who wants to apply for it can apply for it.
Okay.
Not a lot of money, but it's the way it goes.
No, but I think the greater risk here is the sense of equity that, or inequity that may derive from somebody shifting informally.
And just wanted to reiterate this too, is this PCF form, we've always required three signatures. We got out of sync a little bit here and there, but this is not a new regulation, this is the existing regulations. It was established many years ago that the department head signs it, takes the policy procedures, makes sure it's done properly, procedures purposes, goes to finance committee to make sure the funding is in place, is that the funding needed, and then third is ability to be able to make the appointment.
Good. I wonder if we could maybe ask Mr. Stahl to put a date on this memo, and also the date of the meeting, it says October 6th, but it could be 1865, so.
2010.
Right, but I don't want to change the, his wording, so.
On the other letter, it has the date on it.
Okay.
On the one that's called memorandum.
Okay, mine just has the text with no dates.
And Jess, if you want, you have an extra small boards meeting, I take myself in like you, or President, you can present the proper procedures for posting and reiterate this at a meeting so everybody's brought to stop by.
I think it's a great idea. Can we put that down on that November 16th meeting then? If we'll do that as well, go through the drill again. Thank you, Ed. Okay, anything else on the PCF policy? Moving on then to discussion items, moving to the new town hall. And Mike brought this up towards the end of the meeting last week, that we are getting rather close, if you will, to moving over there. The November 2 election will be held here, however, we're getting ready for that building to be open, usable. Do you have a sense, Ed, at this point?
Before the elevated sidewalk has completed today, we had to stop Mr. McGee with performance.
Thought he was in Hollywood, perhaps.
Couldn't get your hands in there.
Tomorrow we'll port the entry at large. From that point on, we'll, we've already stripped all the undesirable soils in the first parking lot and brought up a grid, and we're on second parking lot now, and we'll put geotextiles in that.
What's the map for, to put it down?
To geotextiles is to help maintain a parking lot that doesn't leak. And because the soils are, there are some claves, pockets that might have been missed from the dump, you know, I'll carry the weight evenly throughout the whole parking lot. Also deal with any high water.
Did I, do you ask when? Are we going to be ready to move anytime soon, or the building?
I appreciate it.
Not immediate for you two.
No, no, but like, November 10th?
I can't speak to the committee, but we're trying to do this.
Is it the parking lot that's holding us up, or is it some?
No, parking lot, well, actually, we're in, I had because having things around.
So the.
This week here is a good week, we've got good weather, we're moving along. The last two weeks we got interrupted with rain.
Yeah, but I mean, inside of, whatever happened with the water in the basement?
I looked at it today, looked okay.
The last two rainfall has been shot.
Yeah, there's a valve that's very close to the floor.
That's the one, that's the shutout valve.
And it's down, the valve heats a little bit, but there's a little darkness in the concrete in and around right there, but that spot, it could be coming up.
That's the original concrete too.
Yeah, so that's the only spot I saw today.
But I mean, but there's still work.
It's on, it's on that move's agenda to address.
Well, when is, by the contract, when is that building supposed to be delivered to us?
Okay, it was, it was an approximate date, and that, it was, we had to be fluid with it because our forces were doing a lot of work.
Right.
And the last meeting, it was agreed upon, well, everybody was going to be on or approximately, please correct me if I'm wrong, Thanksgiving. Okay, but, that's very contingent upon the weather and a bunch of other conditions. So that's like a ballpark date.
Yeah.
Now, Ed, are you going to pave the parking lot now?
I'm going to pave the base, so that base course out, and if there's any settling over the winter, we can shim it and then put the top on in the spring.
Okay.
Weather permitting, that couple of real paintings, you know, because we need handicap stalls and stuff like that. So, Mike can have a paint on the lines and, for a basis, they'll work.
Okay. Can we settle the issue with the fire?
I would just wait that. I mean, we, we went down 20 to 3 feet and it packed up pretty well, but you get a good little settlement, so it's just a few minutes or so.
Then the parking issue, is that sort of clarified with the fire department and where the department will drop their vehicles off, there's a space for them, and so is that all that sort of?
That's the original spot, but I'm actually, I'm only doing parking to the top, and we might develop some on the side, but current parking, potential change for the fire department.
Okay.
So you've got to keep in mind that we're not going to finish the job this winter. We're going to finish it probably in the spring. We have to do the front, there's some sidewalks that we have to, you know, add it recently beside the building, so, you know, this stuff just being added, so we just progress. But we won't finish the whole cycle until probably springtime. I hope we have the building over, as soon as possible.
So I think for this.
Do you need more definition of that? I mean, I'm not speaking for the building, they're in charge, I mean, it's not, well, we are, you know, moving ahead of what we normally have for space.
So, we're doing internally to.
Exactly, because there's two things here, I would say, going to that building and all the stuff over there, but I'm more interested in the strategy of moving out of here. How are we going to do that? If we get down to the minutia, things like that, we'll be here a while.
I'm just going to give you the overview of what I'm working on right now to hopefully get us over there around about Thanksgiving, December 1st, if that comes to pass. We have, we're getting quotes for movers. There's one in your pack, we only got one, but we'd ask for three. So basically, that's to move the entire town hall. This particular goal is to move the town hall in one day. There'd be three trucks, nine men, and they would rotate, so basically, one truck would be filled, you'd move donor, unloaded, another truck would only have to get filled, move over. It doesn't include the attic, because we're uncertain how much stuff's been moved in the attic. The goal is that we may end up trying to use the record retention law to dispose of a lot of material and not try to take a lot of that stuff, so the department heads will be getting up there and hopefully going through to that stuff and determining what needs to be brought. And then once we know that, then we'll have to add that on to here, but it shouldn't be that much more. For the, inside of the building, the phone lines, the construction for the phone line for the, for the box, we have a 50 line box, it's going to be finished, but at some point we actually have to move the phone lines over, so some of these things have to be done when we have a date certain. So we have to give the phone company a date certain, we have to give the Secretary of State a date certain, and we have to give Charter a date certain for when we're actually disconnecting and moving over. But in the meantime, we're getting everything, we're getting the phone lines, the box installed, Verizon is, excuse me, Charter has done the outside, and, well, I think they've done the conduit, and they need to come and pull it in, and then they have to go inside and do the inside, set up the IT service or the, I'm assuming the cable stuff inside. When we talk about the technology proposal, one of the things that we're going to need to have is the installation of the IT. So although we have a network set up over here, we're going to have to physically move it over there. So there shouldn't be, in terms of reconfiguring the network, that shouldn't have to happen because that'll stay intact, but we physically have to move the computers and, you know, so that, you know, that is going to be, you know, we don't, we don't know exactly how that's going to go, but hopefully that will.
Okay, and from your perspective then, you've said the three things on which, for which we need a date certain, which Secretary of State, Charter, and Verizon.
Right.
What are the areas that could be done that are independent of that?
Well, we're trying to put the, I guess you'd call it the infrastructure in place to make these things happen. So basically, right now, we're, you know, the whole building will be wired, the phone lines will be brought up to the building, everything will be done, and it'll be a matter of, once we know the date, you know, we make a phone call and then hopefully those things get transitioned over. I don't know that, once the infrastructure's built or the hard wiring is done, I think in terms of making the switch, it's going to be more of an administrative thing from their perspective, from the company's perspective, but even that, I mean, getting Verizon out here to do the construction took, I think, six weeks. And we had, we called them the end of August, and they had already come out and designed the project, and it still took till, I think, last week before they came out. So, I'm just saying, you know, you never, you can't, you know, with a company like Verizon or Charter, you know, you don't know that it's going to be flawless in terms of that communication.
We do have that Thomas calling from Charter.
Yeah, I've been working with Tom, yeah.
You know, in order to make this as smooth as we can, it almost seems like the committee's got to come up with a last date certain, whether it's January 15th or.
Right.
Or, or February 1st, and then we go with that date, and we start timelining these things so that you can pick the date certain, but the committee's got to come up with a worst-case scenario of a date that can't be exceeded, and then we start making our plans based on that instead of a bet. Right now, you know, optimistically, Thanksgiving, well, that, we don't want optimistic, we want worst-case scenario, so that we can make our plans from there. And then we pick that as our moving date and go from there, whatever that date is. So we need, we need from the committee a worst-case scenario date.
And they're meeting on Thursday night, and I'm going to go to that meeting, and that's, I think, getting to be one of the final, and I see that they've got the punch list on there, so I assume they'll talk about that at the meeting. The last thing that we're working on is the furniture and what I'm calling out other equipment, which is cleaning equipment, equipment in the building that, I guess I'm not exactly sure what we're going to end up, if we're going to have fire extinguishers, if we're going to have, you know, what's going to be left for us to supply, because a lot of the things are getting done in the project. So, when I go to the meeting on Thursday night, there's also a topic for wish lists, so we've been kind of making a list just to see if those are things we're going to have to look at after the contract is ended. But right now, the furniture and equipment, you remember, we voted $20,000 on the capital plan, so what we did is we made a list of the needs of the town hall, including, mostly we need fire escape, so a lot of firewood cabinets and types of storage for maps and vital records and such, so we've got those, we've got everything on a list, getting prices, and then we're basically going to prioritize the list.
I mean, this price to move us over there does not seem certainly unreasonable.
Absolutely not.
And, and the next question is, how much to move the IT stuff over there?
That we have to determine when we talk to the.
And then where are we going to get, and then where are we taking, are we taking the money from that $20,000 capital to move us?
For the IT? I'm not.
No, for the whole thing.
For the whole thing?
That's the question, I think the board has to answer.
Well, the, the money for that was for the furniture, so I hope that you're not going to consider taking a little cost.
But we got to come up with the money from somewhere.
Somewhere, right.
What about the kitchen? Kitchen's offset.
Kitchen's offset, right.
So you bought us, you bought the kitchen sink in here.
Okay, so we need to come up with some, some, some money from some source, be it this $3,800 or more. Oops, did I say that?
Listen there, not the.
I, it was a round number, so.
What's our, what, $3,000?
It's okay, it's just a couple.
Okay, may I suggest something? I, I noticed on, this is a ballpark given. We should have a firm trust, not a group seat, not a ballpark, if I may suggest, because this is, they could go crazy, they could go 25, 50 percent more.
Oh, I thought I saw that. Yeah, well, again, this is just the first quote, because we've been having that idea, so we were just trying to get a sense of cost. So now we know, we'll be able to gauge it against the other requests and see, you know, through the ballpark, and then, you know, we can also, you can also negotiate with your low, lowest proposer, so we can only come up, I mean, we could, you know, say we have $3,000 and that's all we can do. We can always limit the scope of the loop, but we really need to get everything over.
But we got to have a funding source.
Right. So back to the funding source, and we need to get with Dave Keelson and.
You're going to have to go finance.
Finance?
You're going to have to.
Mike.
I have several questions. The question is, I looked at the quote you have here, I highly likely that includes prevailing wages for these movers, which we are bottom line Massachusetts general laws have.
Right.
You know, we can't have minimum wage coming in here to do this stuff, you're going to move a bigger lawsuit than $20,000 instead of five. We must make sure every industry has posted this job and has given you the wages for moving these people. I had to do it, we have to do it because we're municipality, Doug, you, you're aware of that.
I've done it with the lady.
The nine guys to go remove this, that's a whole lot of money for the nine guys in here to get this out of here. So, I'm just saying, this is, just make sure when you get this job, it's going to be posted prevailing wage, you have to have liability to our standards, and we also have to make sure they are carrying damage insurance.
Well, they are professional movers, but my understanding is that.
They need to submit all the stuff.
Yeah, that they're part of the.
They'll submit it, and then I'll put it in there, if they have it or not.
Yeah.
That's all.
True, that's a very good point. Yeah, these happen to be members of the Massachusetts Movers Association, we need to understand if they're in good standing or not and those, those things, right.
Well, Kurt Hillson, Kurt Hillson.
And if you can buy that out of the hours, they did it right, but I don't know how much the charge would have been.
Well, I'm talking prevailing wage, they're not prevailing wage, they're close to $35 a hour.
We're talking numbers, that's alone, we can't. Okay, so let's move on from that then. Okay, so we, back to Diana's and Mike's point, we need a date certain or worst-case scenario date, and maybe we can then talk to the other providers, charter Horizon, to let them know so they can schedule their time. I'm assuming that the construction unit of Horizon is different than the service unit?
Yes, yes.
So maybe it'll be a six-week delay.
Well, I'm hoping you have better success than we have in building, construction projects, I've been in a lot of life.
Okay.
You got to figure that in and factor it in, whether it hurts you, supply hurts you, personnel.
All right, so that's, anything else, Diana, you can think of offhand, anybody else?
I just wanted to kind of give you an update on what we're, the only other thing that, that I'm working on is the security system. We have a security system in this building, it's what they call a, I think it's, I don't know exactly what they call it, but basically, it's not a security system that's monitored by a company, it's actually hardwired into dispatch, and since we'll not be above dispatch anymore, I'm not sure how we're going to do that, but we need to, I can ask to.
We have that, we have that, stations, water, security line.
Right, and then we just have to.
At least four of those.
Security system.
Okay. One idea might be, on this specific day, we're already closed on Fridays, so we can use that as one of the moving days to minimize some of the disruption.
Right, well, I guess, on my mind, I had December 1st, just because I heard of Thanksgiving Day too. Now, whether that is going to be, as Mike said, you know, two winters in Tor, like, maybe we need to back that up, but I thought we could move perhaps on Monday, Wednesday and Thursday. I mean, it's possible that we're going to have to shut down the town, you know, the operations for a day or two.
Right.
So I was thinking if we did it on Wednesday, the first, and we did Monday, you know, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, and then hopefully Monday we can be over there.
All right, anything further on the move?
Just a thought on that Friday move, which is a good idea, but then you've got people who aren't working, and you're going to need, you're probably going to need our employees over there telling people where they.
Yeah.
Where the stuff goes.
We did this one before, and especially when you move the phone lines and that, it doesn't always work the way you want it to. Or if you can talk with Horizon, talk and look you up with maybe two or three cell phones, that automatically take the cell number, feed it into it, so at least if you have people over there working, they're picking up the phones.
Good, very, very good point, sure. Okay, well, thanks. Moving on then to the technology proposal, as I think you're all aware, Diana had sent out a request for possible proposers to just get a list of people in the area whom we understand to meet our criteria, which means that they're bonded, which mean that they are, have worked with municipalities and those things. And Diana, do you want to just say anything about this list here?
Well, basically, you also have in your pack a scope of work for IT professional services. Do you want us to read that to the audience, or is that? I don't, I don't, we'll probably put it up on our website too. In addition to, these are a list of names of possible proposers, are people that have either already asked about the possibility for IT service to us or names that have been given us to as recommendations, and we will send it out to all of these people, but we'll also put it on the website and on, probably on Channel 5. I mean, we'll do a little bit more outreach. But I just, in terms of the scope of work, the difference in this and what we were doing previously, the only real difference is that, well, for one thing, I do put that the town departments are operating on separate servers in four locations, with an approximate total of 20 workstations. And that is kind of, and that's including the fire, the hardware, the town hall, and I did include the police department in terms of just explaining that we've got another server, but again, we talked about not bringing the police department in at this point. But the other thing, at the bottom of the IT services to include, what Jess and I have to talk about, and I think some of the board members have kind of also addressed this, but, training somebody in the town to be kind of the, like a troubleshooter basically, so we don't have to call the IT person every single time, if somebody presses a button and their computer doesn't start up. So Reggie has offered to do that, and I'm suggesting that as part of the scope work for the IT professional, that we have in there, that they are to train the town IT technician, and that basically that person will be on staff to troubleshoot, provide utilities for computer hardware, software, perform data recovery if possible, provide technical assistance to users in the town, and carry out that administration, which Reggie is doing.
All right. I would like to say to in support of Reggie, I did ask her to take a look at that situation, reported situation in the tax collector's office, and she interacted with the software provider, which has to do with the payroll system, and was able to get that problem resolved, had to do with people's social security numbers and other private information being too accessible, so that has been cleared up. She's also working on another problem right now in the assessor's office, which is the interconnectedness of the two workstations.
So I would be asking that the IT person understand that they have a direct contact with the consultant, that individual, and that the consultant will provide training to that person as necessary, so that they can work together basically and.
In regard to the IT people, I think it would be advantageous to the town to hire someone with at least four or five technicians in the field, and also to have 24/7 service available with an ex amount of hours of a clock, that's got to be, you know, given, because we can't have a one or two man show, and if they go on vacation or they get ill or whatever, we're sitting here saying, what are we doing? So we, we, we've got to take care of ourselves, we've got to figure out how to do that, and that would be some of the good things.
Who does IT services for East Hampton?
Pardon me?
Aaron House.
Excuse me?
Aaron House.
They have a fair person that works there.
But when you're, when you're doing the scope of work, should we include as part of the scope that this has got to get moved over? How are you going to, should we be soliciting a bid that includes moving us over there?
Well, the way that I was looking at this is more of a professional services, that would be, that they would basically give us a paper service, like an hourly rate, and then I thought, well, once we get that person, we can talk to them about.
But you're not going to have much time to do that.
Could we buy services for East Hampton?
We tried that already, may Mike want to let it go, he's too busy, he's busy full time.
I talked to the mayor, let him know, go. He works for the interior.
I think they talk about regionalization all the time, you know, we hired a part-time person that's supported by Luke's family.
That's a good thought, and we got to retract that.
I thought of that too, like, I just don't know.
Because I mean, this could be a fairly expensive proposition to move this IT stuff over there, and if you're doing it on an hourly rate.
Well, I just was concerned about confusing the two issues on that list, but.
Which brings up the prevailing wage issue again.
I'm not su, I guess I, I'm not clear, they have to have prevailing wage on.
They're not an employee of the.
Construction contracts. I thought that was just for construction, not for.
You know, and I don't know, it brings.
I don't, I do think that it was on service contracts, and this contract would be less than $1,000, which means it doesn't go up to 30 B, so it's a service contract, it's not a construction.
Yeah, but I mean, we don't want to come in and pay 30, I mean, the rate is obviously a lot lower than $35 an hour on this moving contract. We don't want to pay 35.
Mike, you can't, you can't.
No, I don't, but I mean, in general terms, it's more, less than the prevailing wage.
Yeah, I would check on the prevailing wage for service contracts, because I, I think that 30B, prevailing wage is definitely in 149, which is public construction, and 3039M, which is public works construction, but I'm not sure that in service contracts under 30B, you have to pay prevailing wage.
Do you know anything for like a licensed electrician apartment?
Right, but that would be a.
It's from dollar one, they've got to pay prevailing wage, but I don't know about this, I'm sorry.
That's right, yeah, yeah, for the construction you do, but I, I guess I'm not, I wasn't familiar that you have to do it on service contracts.
All right, okay, so anything else, anything else in the technology proposal? Okay, the committee handbook, I think you might all have seen the email that went out this afternoon, Reggie has just about finished formatting that, and she's going to send it out electronically, or she will give it to us at her next meeting. That's the committee handbook request to review. We have another item too, Doug has asked for, any comments on that committee handbook? Okay, Doug has asked for just a little bit of airtime to read something.
Two things, if I may. Quickly, on the agenda, under executive session for our next meeting, I'd like to address this board in regard to the grab company on strong loan. And I know we're going to schedule that with our beautiful boss, so I would, I would request that. Okay? Also, I had a little thing happen. I read this last meeting, however, we weren't televised, and to show the due respect to all the people that were involved in this thing right here, I would like to read it again, if I may. Okay. To the Southampton Board Selectmen, on October 9th at approximately 4:00 PM, we called the Southampton Emergency Dispatch to request an ambulance to our house for my 89-year-old father-in-law who was experiencing shortness of breath. Within minutes, Officer David Latour arrived and started taking down vital information. Very shortly after Officer Latour's arrival, Officer David Neal arrived and prepared a route for the ambulance attendants to remove the patient by means of a stretcher. The ambulance arrived shortly, that is Southampton Fire Department, with Chief Hyde and Deputy Chief Bill Colita. My father-in-law was transported to Bay State Medical Center, where he is now in stable condition. He's home now, thanks to these guys. Thanks to the professional efforts of our emergency responders, I'm very happy to praise all the players in this emergency. And I want to just list them. The emergency dispatcher very cunning, took down all the information and dispatched police and ambulance personnel. The police were the first responders, taking down vital information and ensuring it means a big rest for the fire department, ambulance staff took a note of the stretcher. The ambulance staff quickly stabilized the patient and transported him to the hospital. The family deeply appreciates the professionalism of these responders. I would appreciate that each of the five people involved in this incident received a copy of this letter for his or her personal file. Thank you to the family of Douglas Blanchard. Thank you very much, Bill, and for everybody, you guys did a wonderful, wonderful job, I want to chip some down, you guys are right there. Thank you so very much. That's it.
Thank you, Doug. Uh, if there's no further business, we'll take the motion to dissolve.